So I just want to acknowledge a new commissioner that we have on board, and it's Chris Cotton. And thank you for your time and service with us as well. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for five minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County vis a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. So I believe we need to adopt our September 20 and 21 minutes. Is there a motion or any questions?
I saw movement, Madam Chair.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, I see that, motion passes. We might have some changes to our agenda, Ms. Ziegler?
We do. The following are off, number nine, 16, 19, 20, 23, and 24. So that's number nine, which is 1234 Sixth Avenue North. They did not meet the notification requirements. Number 16, that's the abatement program revision, we'll bring that to you next month. Number 19, 305 Greenway, the applicant has requested a referral. 23, 2127 West Linden, they revised their permit for an administrative, or their application for an administrative permit. And 24, which is 2808 Ackland Avenue, and the applicant requests a referral.
Anyone in the public that has any questions to this or wants to pull anything out? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, there's the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I saw movement, Madam Chair.
Okay, and we have a motion and there's a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, I see that passes. Thank you. And are there any council members present today? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Some are to consent.
As a matter of fact, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held. Nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. We will read each case out one by one. If you are in opposition of the project, please raise your hand when we call out the case you want heard. Items removed from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the agenda. Okay, this month on the consent agenda, 300 Scott Avenue is the first one, it's new construction and an addition. 128 Blackburn Avenue, new construction and an addition. 600 Hendrick Street, new construction, this is an outbuilding with setback determination. 605 Press Place, this is signage. 720 Bosco Bell Street, new construction, this is an outbuilding. 1616 Benjamin Street, new construction, and it's an addition and an addition. 930 McFarren Avenue, new construction, this is an infill, it's an SP. 1303 Bosco Bell Street, new construction and it's an addition. 1407 Elmwood Avenue, new construction, outbuilding with a setback determination.
This one was pulled, is that correct? No? Okay.
Sorry?
Sixth Avenue is the one that was pulled.
Okay.
I do think it was Elmwood, this is not me in any way, she would want to do things, they'd want to speak for Elmwood.
Okay, so we'll remove that from consent and that'll be heard at the end of the agenda.
Who was it who wanted to speak?
I'm not sure.
Did you want to speak on that other one? Not now, but you do want to, right?
Okay, so let's clarify this, please. So we have several people who would like, in the public, who would like to speak on number 14, which is 1407 Elmwood Avenue, is that correct? Please raise your hand if you are making comment. Because what will happen, let's let us explain for just one moment because we do have public hearing, is that when you have a question, and if you, if it's not clear on, if you have an opposition to it, then it will be pulled from the consent agenda and because it was not anticipated that this would be pulled from consent, then staff will need to review that. And so then that will be pulled to the end of the agenda, not within the line of this agenda item. Is that clear? Okay, so you're nodding your head that you would like this pulled from consent? Okay, I believe, I believe that we are pulling it from consent.
Do you do approve some scripts? I have an opportunity to respond, is it okay?
You will.
Sure. When we do pull from consent, that means we will have, the staff will present it, will present the project, and then you will, the applicant will have a chance to present, then we're going to open public hearing and then close it, and then the commissioner will discuss. Is that, is that good? Very good, thank you. We just talked about that because sometimes we do have these things come up, so we just want to be sure that the public is, is aware of how this process goes. All right? Okay, so that's going to be at the end of the agenda.
And then the last one is 2101, it's new construction and an addition.
Okay. Joseph, that's, that's the last of them? All right, are there any questions on the consent agenda or is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, motion to amend the consent agenda with 1407 Elmwood Avenue being added to the regular agenda for today at the end, and the remaining items for approval on consent.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? Robin, did you get the second? Sometimes I have one or two, so I just want to make sure.
Who was it? Thank you.
It's either Dr. Williams or Beth Cashin.
I think Dr. Williams was first.
Okay. We just want to make sure we get our motions correctly. All right, there's a first, a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you.
First violation today is at 1418 Bushnell in Lockland Street East End. The violation is in regard to the outbuilding that was constructed. Framing's okay, majority of the project's okay except for one elevation in which they added faux grain siding. Under the guidelines, materials should mimic historic materials and texture, dimensions and workability, and not create a false sense of history. Faux grain siding is listed as not appropriate material for new construction as a faux tester is not seen on historic woodlapped siding. Throughout this permit, it was noted that such siding was not permitted, not allowed, and of course, it was installed without review. So for this project, staff recommends that the faux grain siding at 14 Bushnell be removed within 60 days. The commission's decision, finding it does not meet section 4A and 4B, Part 1 of Design Guidelines, return to 20th Century Districts. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? Other than that, thank you, Kelly. Is the applicant here?
I did the siding in July of '21, and things were kind of crazy and it wasn't even smooth.
Oh, sorry. Also, can, I think, just for us, because it sounds like that the audio's not as strong here, is be sure you speak into your mic, and if you would just please say your name and address.
My name is John Cox, the address is 418 Bushnell Street.
Thank you.
And I'm kind of a DIYer, and July of, as I said, 2021, things were getting really scarce. And as I would try to find it and order it, they would not only say, hey, we don't have it, but we don't know when we're going to get it. So that was one of the reasons why, and I did want to kind of string my contractor along and not get him paid until I could get the siding, so that's one of the main reasons why I did put the embossed on. And I've talked to the neighbors in the area, especially the one that it concerns the most in her backyard, and she said, as long as you don't start a fire or cause a flood, I don't care what you do. And then some of the other neighbors, some of the other neighbors gave me the support too, since it is on the back of the dada, not on the sides or facing the street. So that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cox. Open public hearing? Which means anyone can come and speak on that? If not, public hearing will be closed and the commission will debate or discuss.
I just have a question, and it may be my inability to read the drawings and the photograph, but what is the correct material on the other three sides?
You're asking staff, Beth? Okay?
Yes.
So the other three sides have general shade, and those were correct, it was just that one elevation that has the faux grain siding on it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioners, anything else we need to?
Rather consistent on this one, from the factory unless it's a brand I'm not familiar with, there's a smooth side and there's a not smooth side, so I think maybe this would just put up an error and we've required other, in other situations, required other applicants to correct this side. It's not historically accurate, I think it's a determination, and it's said on, it's stated on all the permits, so I don't have a lot of questions in my mind on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I know we have challenges with supply chain and all that, and this is one of the things that's actually listed in the national requirement for historic preservation. It's something that's in our guidelines in numerous places, and at least two places on the permit drawings, as well as the information that says if you're changing, you need to come back and have that material reviewed. So like Commissioner Mosley said, we've been pretty consistent on this because it's so clear that this is not an appropriate material for these houses.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll just make one more comment, and I know the applicant has said that because his neighbors has said it's okay, this commission's purview is with guidelines that have been established in accordance with the Secretary of the Interiors, and also the neighborhood associations have brought it before us. So those guidelines are how we review projects, so just want to have clear understanding to the applicant as well, even if your neighbors say that's okay, it's, that's not our purview. Our purview is with the guidelines and the Secretary of the Interiors. Is there a motion, Commissioner? Or further discussion? I think it's pretty clear.
With respect to 418 Bushnell Street, I move for conformance with staff recommendations of denial.
Thank you, Vice Chair. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Hey, Kelly, just move this, this mic, we have a hard time with these things. Yes?
Now.
Better.
I'm naturally very quiet, so. Second violation is 3910 Valley Road. This home was constructed circa 1948 in the minimal traditional style and contributes to Charity Park. The commission approved a rear addition, side window alterations, and a front dormers in October of 2021. The initial violation was found in August of 2022 during an inspection. The rear addition was constructed differently than was permitted. The front dormers were also constructed with a shallower pitch. The applicant was willing to correct the rear addition. Staff revisited the site on October 3 of 2022. The addition had been corrected, but the front dormers had not. Staff also found that a front window had been altered and partially enclosed. The applicant requests to keep the front dormers and windows as constructed. So the dormers, when approved, had, were approved with a 2 and 3 fourth over 4 pitch. Historically, the type of dormers typically had a 2 or 4, or 4, sorry, 2 over 4 pitch or 4 over 12 pitch. What was built resembled more of a flat roof, which of course you don't really see historically. Also, as constructed, it increases the wall height of the dormer, just kind of giving it a larger appearance, something you might not again see historically. And then there's also the question of the window. The front window was altered in both size and location. It was noted on the permit when we received it that the windows label is to fit, would be the same windows, brand new, but to fit the opening. This is one of the ones that was marked as to fit, so it was supposed to stay the same, there was no indication that was going to be altered. Typically, alterations to window openings are not appropriate on the front facade unless there is evidence that it was different historically. The guidelines also state that historic window and door dimensions should be retained. We have no evidence that there was a different window on the front facade, and the photos that you see were from the 60s and from 2002. So staff recommends that the pitch of the dormers be corrected to meet the approved 2 and 3 fourths over 12 pitch, and that the front window be corrected to match the historic opening in size and location. Finding that the alterations do not meet section 3B1D and 3A4, the guidelines for partial demolition, and section 6E for dormers of Part 1 Design Guidelines, return at the 20th Century Districts. You have any questions?
Kelly, just for clarity, I think I understand what the violation is and what we're asking for correction. So it was a single slope dormer as originally proposed with a greater slope to it, there was no, there's no hip or gable or anything on the dormers, they're just flat dormers, but they now have nearly zero pitch.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, we'll have some later. Thank you, Kelly. Is the applicant here?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi.
Say that one more time, please.
Hi, Lindsay Doyle. I am the homeowner of 3910 Downey Road. I also have my contractor here, if there's any questions for him. But basically, so there was a few things that changed when this construction happened. From a financial standpoint, as we got going, there were things that were just out of budget, so we tried to do with what we, you know, with what we had and what I had from a budget standpoint. We, my contractor suggested, instead of having a flat part on the roof, to make a seamless merge, which we, when they came out to do the inspection, they told us that we needed to change it. So we complied and we made a change. However, there's a house that's on the street directly behind me that had the roof the exact same way, and after speaking to neighbors and people in the neighborhood, they had said that, you know, they, that this was allowed in that neighborhood. And then after the fact of that meeting, everything, the dormers were not discussed at that time. After that, I called and asked questions, and from that standpoint, it was as if I was asking inappropriate questions because I was trying to find out the guidelines in the neighborhood to make sure that we were following all the orders as is. My intention is to keep the house from the standpoint, you know, with making additions to it, but always keeping the original character of the home. The reason that I switched the window in the front of the house and made it smaller was to accommodate a bathroom that's on the interior of the home, and also now they, now they match. Before, they did not match aesthetically from the outside. I didn't change the front of the house in a way of making these, you know, giant modern windows, which you see in Cherokee Park all over the place. And so to me, I didn't know that I had to ask to do that because I never received guidelines when I purchased the home in this neighborhood. As far as the dormers go, we were approved to do dormers on the house. The pitch is actually incorrect on this measurement, and my contractor can verify that as well. They're off by an inch, and, you know, the slope of the dormer was approved to do that, but it's just like an inch or two, and he didn't want to cut into the trusses of the original structure of the home. So that's why, in his professional opinion, that's why it was done that way versus what a drawing says from the architect. At this point, I do not have the financial ability to make these changes that are so minor. When I sent out the letters to my neighbors, I've received nothing but support from all of them, and a few of them have emailed you guys as well, letting you know their thoughts and opinions on the minimal changes that we have made to the home. And yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you, do you want your contractor to come up or just, you, how many more minutes do we have there?
Six minutes.
Okay, and you can reserve two minutes for rebuttal to a public comment.
Yeah, I just want to confirm, the window we installed in the front of the house is an aluminum clad window, which I believe is on the approved documents. We did the dormers for, again, additional ceiling height as well on the second story, and I think we're at a one and a half 12 pitch. So again, if it's, it's a seven foot long dormer, so we're, you know, every foot that goes by, we're about an inch of slope off, but that was for an additional four inches of ceiling height on the leading edge of the dormer, like facing the front yard. But, if you have any other questions, we can.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the contractor at the moment? Okay, nothing for now.
I still have a picture, the photo, sorry, I have a photo too, of the front of the house now with the brick covering, and, you know, we're going, we're planning to paint the house. So with that, you won't notice a difference in those photos from the front window too from 2002 and 1968, I believe, were those two reference photos. You can't even see the window, it's covered by a tree, and I plan to put a tree back in that place. So I don't believe anyone will notice the difference between the window size.
Are you saying you want to submit those pictures right now or what?
He's showing you the photo, yeah, of the front of the house.
Okay, oh, it's on your phone. Robin, is that permissible or not?
I, I don't know that it is real now.
Yeah, is it new? Okay, we might ask you some questions later, but we'll just go with that for now, if that's your presentation, all right? Okay. All right, so a public, public hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this project? If not, closed public hearing. I think one thing that I'm, my, aware of is that what did the permit say? I think, let's go with that discussion first, just kind of suggesting that, because as I read it, and this was the permit on October 2021, reviews required, says windows approval prior to install, door approval prior to install, and all the rest of that. Inspections required, there are some specifics to that, so I think the permit, whether the applicant actually is in line with that.
You know, we wind up dealing with this more often than we should. Almost every meeting, there's something where the contractor has changed things and not reviewed it. You know, the first line on the permit is, is at the very top, it says, "Changes to existing buildings should be communicated to staff. Some alterations require review, some do not." You know, please confirm with the staff before changing the conditions. And then when you get down to the permit, there are red boxes on the drawings that they submitted that say the same thing, and said, "Changes can be required to be reversed." You know, I know that these seem minor to a lot of people, but a flat dormer, flat roof dormer on the front of a house is not in character with historic neighborhoods. You see that sometimes on the rear of houses, but certainly not on the fronts. And so I think that, you know, as, as much as I sympathize with the process and with the circumstances, I think we have to adhere to the guidelines from, you know, nationally and locally as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll add for the record, it appears in the drawing that the bearing height for the window, and albeit can be a water intrusion issue, the window is setting six, four to six inches off the, in the drawing, four to six inches off of the, the front. So I find the argument that we gained four inches a little specious, maybe four inches at the top by changing the pitch, but setting it an additional 12 inches off the top of the roof and yielding, in an appearance, you know, we're not looking at an elevation, which is how the drawings are drawn here, but it's significant in my mind, more significant than a little bit.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, I, I kind of look at this as, you know, a lot of, some people say it's better to beg forgiveness than ask permission, and that's just the saying that comes to my mind right now. I don't have as much issue with the, the window as I do with the dormers, but I respect what my fellow commissioners have, have to say about it. This is.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chairman, with that said, with respect to 3910 Valley Road, I move for denial with staff recommendations.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes.
This house dates to around 1929 and contributes to the Kenner Manor Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Jenny, could you just speak up just a little bit more?
One second.
Thank you.
It is on.
We can't hear it very well.
Can you hear, let's use this one.
That's better, thank you.
Much better.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to start over.
Thank you.
Next is 184 Kenner Avenue. This house dates to circa 1929 and contributes to the Kenner Manor Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The application is to build a front pergola over a historically uncovered portion of the front porch. The 1932 The 1932 Sanborn map and the 1968 property assessor photograph both show a partial width front porch. It's common in historic overlays throughout Nashville to see a form similar to this, where an uncovered portion of a porch extends beyond the covered portion. Given this evidence and the physical, and the typical form, staff found that this is the original porch configuration. The applicant is proposing to construct a pergola over the uncovered portion of the porch. The commission has denied similar requests to cover uncovered portions of front porches in the past, determining that front additions do not meet the design guidelines and that front porches are character defining features that should not be altered as per the Secretary of the Interior standards. The applicant submitted these undated photographs showing that there was once a pergola in this same location. Staff finds that it is not appropriate to alter the front elevation, even if doing so would recreate a previous nonhistoric alteration that has since been removed. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed pergola, finding the proposed front addition does not meet Section 6B1 of the design guidelines. The applicant is here, but first, do you have questions for me?
Thank you, Jenny. Come forward if you would like to speak. If not, we're, we're here to hear you.
Hi, I'm Rob Quinn. Thank you for hearing my request. And it's fairly simple, and it's pretty much what Jenny laid out, is that I would like to return the portion of the front porch to what it looked like before, when it was covered, the pergola covering. And the request with, so I'm not sure when the porch was extended. I don't know what the date on that was. I do know that the pergola porch was taken off in 2012. So it was there for a period of time, but again, I don't know the start date on when it appeared. My request is as much practical as it is aesthetic, because you lose the use of that space. The other problem is, and I don't know if it was obvious from that early, the earliest picture, but there were windows and not doors. And then when the porch was extended, the doors, excuse me, the windows were transformed into doors. So with the space being uncovered, I hadn't been able to protect the doors, and now I've got to replace those to the tune of a handsome dollar. So again, my request is as much practical as it is aesthetic. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my architect is here, if you had any questions for him?
Okay.
I would like to speak. Just a quick.
Yes, please.
My name is Gayus Overton, and I had the honor of working with Rob on his house at 184 Kenner. And we thank Mrs. Warren for all her help and guidance in this process. I just want to make the point that all buildings and houses go through changes over time, and that's normally respected by historic preservationists and architectural historians as part of the history and character of houses. And I think it's a significant point that the pergola was on the house as part of its authentic history before the Kenner Manor was accepted into the National Register Historic Places in 2016. And I would venture to say that if the pergola had been there in 2016, it sounds like it wasn't, that the National Register would have had no problem, it would have been no impediment to the house being put on the National Register as being a valid part of the history of the house and its character. And to me, the pergola, you know, is, is seems like a very appropriate architecturally to this style of house. It has gone through some number of transitions. You know, originally, the 1929 version just had single columns on either side. Currently, it has double columns, which gives it a little bit different look. It was originally a single door with two side lights, and now it's a double doors. It originally did not have the full porch extension all the way across. It really, the, if you look at the old original tax map, that porch pretty much stopped where the existing porch is now. So that porch extension also in the authentic, the history of the house was added at some point. And, you know, in the southern climate, I'm sure, at the time, if you want to sit out there and be in the shade, a pergola would be a perfect, you know, addition to the house and would be architecturally appropriate. And I would just refer to the staff commission to look at this photograph. And in my opinion, when you look at this, you think there's something missing there. There's something missing, and it looks like it should have a pergola. So that's, thank you.
We appreciate your comment. Okay. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? Comments? Thoughts? And review?
So I'll be interested in how the other commissioners respond to this as well. I know that in the past with projects that we've looked at, one of the objectives is to create that project at a single point in time, and that, that the history of the house was there. And certainly, I don't think we've ever approved putting something like a pergola on a house that never had one before, or to make those kind of changes. But with the evidence that this one did have one, it'd be interesting to see. I, I do, I do, now that I see that the doors are there and look back at the original photograph for the pictures, it, it does look a little bit, you know, modified and, and different. So, so I'd be interested in what the other commissioners feel about that as well.
Looking at me, so I'll say something. Normally, making a conjectural addition to a house like this where it, it had none before would, would, would kind of be a nonstarter. But given, I mean, I'm, I'm at least compelled to entertain the argument that it, it might be appropriate because there is evidence that it was here before. The staff seems, not seems, the staff has, has taken the opinion that between 68 and, you know, 2016, that, that it didn't have, it didn't have it sort of then in the, in the period of significance perhaps for the neighborhood, but it did for some period of time. And under, under a different circumstance, I'm, I'm not sure how we, you know, if it were removed and you were putting the windows back, you know, per the 1968, I don't, we would certainly, I don't know that we would have objection, there would be a validation for that. Is the other way? I think you're asking the question the same way. I'm considering it, is the other way acceptable? And I'm, it's certainly entertaining the possibility that it might be, but I, it's, this one's, it's not, not straightforward.
We don't have things that are too straightforward.
I would entertain the idea, but I have a little bit of an issue with this addition on the front. You know, it's just against our guidelines, but I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm still thinking about it.
Sweet. I think the other thing too, that we, as a commissioner, is that when a project comes before us and it is unusual, it will, another one will come before us like it. And are we staying within our guidelines? Are we given an exception and we don't want to set precedence? I think those are our general ideas, and, and again, we go with the guideline. I mean, actually, those window, the doors, the new doors, they're not original, and that was probably before the overlay came into effect. But I think we, we are cautioned when we make such a decision that is not based on what we've done before or the Secretary of Interiors or the guidelines.
And we don't have any idea when it was the original pergola was built, nor why it was removed, do we?
And we will, Jenny, you have an, yes?
We do not know when it was originally constructed. Clearly sometime after 1968, but I'm not sure exactly when.
And, and before the historic overlay?
Probably.
And the doors were added prior to the overlay as well?
Probably.
Because those would also not be.
And we would not approve that.
Right.
Today, we would not approve that.
No.
The front doors were changed from a single doors, the lights, to double doors. The columns were changed, so.
Any other comments?
I'm, I'm torn because I, I think of preservation, I'm thinking of as a snapshot of a moment in time. So while it may have been existence prior to the overlay, I think we're compelled to go by what the standards were when the overlay was.
And again, in our purviews as well, when the staff presents a drawing or historical from a Sanborn map, we appreciate those, the background, and also just that there was not a pergola original.
Yeah, it, it's changed so much, you know, and the doors have been put in, and, and now they're having damage to the doors. I just think that there's extenuating circumstances in some of these cases, and I, I don't know, I'm going kind of both ways too. Commissioner, do you see any other way to protect the, those doors or?
Any of our.
You know, doors like this, especially, I think these are probably west facing, so they get a lot of weather, and so it's, it, it's hard to, to protect them from that standpoint. I guess the other thing, you know, you talk about a precedent. You know, I know that in the past where there were, for instance, I know of at least one project where there was not a dormer on the house when the overlay was enacted, but you could see the framing in the attic from where the, where the dormer was up there before, and they were allowed to restore the original dormer that was there. So, and, and I think that, you know, it has to be clear evidence that, that element was there before to be able to do that, and that not many projects are going to wind up falling within that category, so.
To crystallize maybe some of the argument that I've heard is that, I think by permitting pergola here, you, you would be taking more of the snapshot in time. You would be moving the project less into compliance, certainly with the doors. If the doors weren't there and some of these other things weren't, the project would be less in compliance based, I think, based on the, the period of significance I had not from the staff would be, would be appreciated here. And so that, that, you know, would, would lend itself towards not permitting it. And I think that certainly is a position that the, the staff has taken. And, and I think that while not, I think it is significant when you put a front addition on it. We've heard some dormer cases that were, you know, we consider those very carefully in, in, in the districts, and, and that the significant changes are, are something that, and we are, you know, we are taking this very seriously. But I, I think certainly because it was there before is compelling, but are we moving towards, more towards compliance or, or a way by allowing it in, in the vein of, of discussion about setting precedents or, or not? In the, the specifics of this case being, being what they are, I think, parallel to be drawn by finding evidence in the, in the attic for a dormer that might have been there. Are we, is that sort of before nonpictorial evidence, before the period of significance or after, maybe is, is how we each might take our, take our position on this one at the end of the day? And which of those should be valued more? It's a tough one.
Well, the other thing too is that, you know, now today you have gutters that hopefully catch more of that moisture. I know it's west side, as we've said, that, and again, looking at it, say, say the commission has whatever thoughts they are in terms of this decision, is that, does the overhang, it looks quite deep. I don't know if it's because of the, what's a normal 24-inch overhang? I don't know. Fouries. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then my mind goes back to all the porches that we've said no to, you know? And that precedent is, is a pretty good, pretty good argument. So I'll take a stab at, at respect to 184 Kenner Avenue. I, I move that we approve staff recommendations for disapproval of the pergola.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
There's a.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we have one opposition. It's all in favor of the motion, yes, we've got that, so we, we've made our decision then. Okay? Thank you. And I think one, one thing that I want to, just got out of that, is that we're moving, and Commissioner Mosley has said it, is we're moving into compliance. You know, there's things that have been passed in, in the past, and it is difficult for us because, you know, today is 2022, and that was 19 and 30. But moving into compliance and what we have as purview is really, we try to make our best decision. So applicant, I hope you understand that that's kind of why the decision is being made, and we do our best to try to follow our purview. Okay? We shall move on.
All right, it looks like maybe one of the monitors went out, but the others are on, so, oh, we're back. All right. Good news. 521 Woodland Street. This is an application to install a monument sign in the front of the rectory of the Holy Name Catholic Church. Street view image there shows the previous sign that was hit by a car. The new sign will be in front of the rectory building, which is to the left of the church structure. The new sign in front of the rectory, staff finds that location to be appropriate. It'll be a little further away from Woodland Street and further away from South Sixth Street, a little bit more protected there. The design guidelines allow for signs to be 16 square feet and up to five feet tall. The proposed sign is over seven feet tall and is roughly 60 square feet. The size of the proposed sign does not meet the design guidelines. The proposed sign is shown having an LED message board in the center, and this is to have changeable text and images. And the guidelines say that backlit signs or signs that flash are not permitted in this The applicant pointed to a sign across the street that is a large LED message sign. That sign at 510 Fatherland Street is 400 feet away at the opposite end of the block across the street, and more importantly, that is outside the overlay, so it was not reviewed by this commission. Some signs that are in the Edgefield overlay, these are two at churches or buildings that were originally churches. On Russell Street in the overlay, these are approximately five feet by five feet with signage centers that are 16 square feet. These are some other signs on Woodland Street. So obviously, these signs appear to meet the design guidelines. They've been there several years. And again, signs in the overlay are limited to five feet tall with 16 square feet of signage. The proposal does not meet three of the design guidelines. That's Section 4, 3A, B, and F. And as such, staff recommends approval of the application for signage at 521 Woodland Street with the following conditions: that the monument sign does not exceed five feet wide and five feet tall, with the signage panel not exceeding 16 square feet, and that the sign does not have LED or electronic. sign does not have LED or electronic changeable copy, but it may have manual, manually changeable copy, and the sign shall not be internally illuminated or backlit. And finding those conditions, staff finds that signage meets section 4, 3 of the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines. And the applicant, I believe, is here. I can answer questions, and I'm sure they'll have.
Sean, I do have a question. I see the language in the guidelines for the five-foot height restriction. What about the five-foot width restriction? Is that, where does that come from?
It's not in the guidelines. So I was just drawing a comparison to the, the other comparable signs at, at churches in the neighborhood. You know, they have, they essentially have a four-foot by four-foot sign, which meets a 16-square-foot maximum for signage, but they're in a monument that's five feet wide. So there's like a one-foot border around all four sides, essentially the, the base and then wrapping all the way around. So I just was making a recommendation for a comparable sign to what's been, what is present at other churches.
Thank you, Sean. Applicant?
Good day. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm JR with the Design Company as a project manager. What we're proposing is a LED electronic message center, but very small, very minimal, two-foot by six-foot. And if the overall size of the sign is a problem as far as the, you know, the heights and that, it was designed to meet the, basically, the flavor of the church. So we can bring the size down to maybe eight-foot wide, five-foot height, but the LED message center, and within that area on that block, there's nothing else there but the church itself. And as they pointed out, there is a huge LED message center across the street, but it's right outside of the guidelines or the historical border. If it would be possible to have, have it exempt that block just for the church in that block, we would like to, we could bring the size down, but just keep the, the minimal as far as the message center at the same size. It wouldn't, we can bring the outside of the size down comparable.
Okay. Is that your presentation?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi. Hey, I'm Peter Lawrence, 1908 Franklin Avenue in East Nashville, Eastwood Neighbors. I've been a member of Holy Name Church since 2003.
Just one moment, so you're not with the applicant?
I'm the Building Committee Chair.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
So I've been with the church since 2003, since we bought our home. It's the Catholic Church of East Nashville. It has a history in East Nashville of 162 years, and it burned, the original church burned in the Nashville Fire and was rebuilt in 1916. So our current church is over 100 years old. Since taking over Building Committee Chair, the sign at the corner of South Sixth Street and Woodland has been hit by cars three or four times in two years. And so, as we said, we want to move the sign back. Really, our main, Father Theo, our pastor who's here, I think he's going to speak, he wanted to modernize our ability to reach the community, and we feel that the LED sign is within the context of our block, because someone said 400 feet, it's actually more like 350 feet from that sign. There's another sign. Our proposed sign is 10 feet wide by 7.3 feet tall. The one across the street is 15 feet wide by eight and a half feet tall. So I just think if you're looking for a context within the neighborhood, we have one right across the street. And as the Building Committee Chair, I need to represent Father Theo's wishes, and he's trying to get this sign to more, make more of a presence in the community and draw more people like myself who moved to East Nashville in 2003 and needed a place of worship. Thank you very much, that's all I have. There are other members, our pastor and our Pastoral Council President, and also some of the parishioners would like to speak, so I don't know if that's to the two-minute or if that should go now under our remaining five minutes.
Yes, your remaining five minutes.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, I'm Father Theo, I'm the pastor of Holy Name. One of the things we are putting this LED sign is because we host a lot of things. It might interest you to know that Holy Name hosts aloes and fishes. We also host other agencies like AA, they have a meeting over there, and then another group that takes care of homeless, trying to find housing for them. And then being in Woodland Street and Main Street, Woodland Street has a lot of traffic. And when we are talking about the other sign from First Nazarene Church, it's just 510 Woodland Street. Ours is 521. We are just across from each other. So in order to, you know, let people know, it's all about communication, and then telling them there are so many opportunities they can have when they read through the LED sign so that they can come to Holy Name and then use those opportunities, especially our new people coming into East Nashville. So they have the opportunity when we begin to put all this message in there so that they will be able to use those opportunities we have. That's why we are asking for this.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your being here.
Thank you for affording the opportunity for us to come and discuss this with you. My wife and I have been parishioners at Holy Name for about six years, and.
Your name, your name and address, please.
Sorry.
Say that one more time, sorry.
Glenn Hutchins, my wife's Emily Hutchins. And not only are we parishioners there, but we live on Woodland Street. So we've seen not just an evolution take place on Woodland Street, we've seen a revolution take place with regard to buildings going down, both because of construction, normal construction evolution, let's say, but also because of the tornado a couple of years ago. But the sign that was on, was on the property, it was effectively a magnet. Every other week, we'd go out there and have to replace it and see who, who was damaged or injured with that, and it was, it was an unfortunate situation that we wished to remedy. And so this is where this plan began from. And while we're very proud as a, as a parish for our mission remaining the same, the times haven't stayed the same, as you know. And so it's more important than ever to have a more effective method to gain new parishioners, especially people like my wife and myself who recently moved to the area. And, and that's where this, this board came from, and, and I heard you speak about precedent a number of times in this meeting, and I think it's, it's where we were as well. And when we came out the front door of Holy Name and saw the sign across the street, we thought we were in good stead for this request. So please, we ask you to consider this once again. Thank you for the time and your mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else from your church? Under the time? Okay? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, open public hearing? Close public hearing? I have a question on how far does the overlay from where to where on this? And I'll, I'll lead into why I'm asking.
This is taken from, essentially from the East Park Community Center, looking towards, looking to the northeast, and the property line just to the left of the rectory is the boundary of the overlay. There's a parking lot to the left of that, to the east, to the west of that, that is outside of the overlay.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Sometimes we look at this like things that are happening downtown because of flashing lights and LEDs and things like that. So I think it's, it is a unique situation. But again, down on Woodland, there's commercial properties that go all the way through almost to Five Points, and that's, I think that's why I was saying, where's that overlay? Boundary?
The, I believe the entire 600 block of, it kind of jumps as it goes down to the east. The entire 600 block is in the overlay. These, these buildings are all on the 600 block of Woodland. I believe that part of the 700 block is in and.
And so the back section of this church is not under the overlay?
It backs up to an alley, and then I believe the alley is the boundary, the northern boundary of the overlay.
And, and the church does own the property on the other side of that alley to Main Street? And that's not in the overlay?
Okay. So that's some good clarification there as well. There's, so I'm going to wait for the Commission to discuss.
When you talk about similar to downtown, there's a certain historic church downtown that's one of the oldest in the city. I won't call it the name, but they established a LED sign outside that church, and I just, I'm sorry, I just get apoplectic when I look at that church and I see that sign out front. And so I can't help kind of, I sympathize with the applicants, but in my meager historic heart, I have a big problem with really old churches and bright flashing lights, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I would just say, as someone who lives on the very edge of an overlay, it gives me a little bit of pause to start eating into an overlay, again, as someone who lives on the edge. Which is not to say I'm not a little torn about this, but, but yeah, I just think we're talking about actual overlays and actual boundaries. The boundaries are there for a reason.
True.
You know, I sympathize with the church, having dealt with signage for our church before, and I know that the metro signage regs require you to be a greater distance from the street than older historic signs would have been, which increases the challenge. However, the guidelines are pretty clear as far as what's allowed here, and for a church, it's four times the square footage that you'd have for a residential sign that would be there. So I think the guidelines are appropriate in this regard. I tend to agree with Commissioner Mahal as far as the LED. And, and one of the real problems with LED is they have such capabilities that even if it's agreed that they put in and not flash and not change, except to change the message, you don't know what's going to happen when the board changes or the parish has a different direction. They're typically capable of doing all sorts of things that violate not only our guidelines but other guidelines. The one other comment that I would make is that I think the location of the sign needs to be studied fairly carefully. It is to the left of the sidewalk and front door of the rectory, as shown in these exhibits, and which makes it look like the Holy Name Catholic Church is the rectory rather than the primary building. And so I think finding a location closer to the center of that lot would, would give you a little more visibility and, and presence on the street as well.
I don't have a whole lot to add to what other commissioners have said, but over the brief period that I've been on this commission, we, one of the things that we've taken very seriously has been signs. Been in compliance with the signs. Most of the time it was downtown, but still signs have been a big issue. And as I listened to this, and y'all don't take this the wrong way, I was thinking about, well, what if this wasn't a church? What if it was some other structure? How would we look at it? And we probably would say no. So for the sake of consistency, I would be inclined to support staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Lastly, I'll add, I understand the difficulty here, having, albeit pro bono, when I lived in Germantown, drew a, a new sign for the Minow Street Methodist Church. And to do something that architecturally responds to the church, this definitely does that, and so I think it's more fitting than if it were just a rectangle you just kind of jammed out in the front yard. I appreciate the effort. I think when you, there's been, I won't further comment on the LED piece of it. It's hard to get much text. They don't make, they still make them, but they're, they're certainly less, I got, I think the church got quizzical looks when they were trying to buy the really short letters instead of the taller ones, because not many people use those anymore. But in, in a changeable copy scenario, it is quite the challenge. But I think, you know, appropriate, the guidelines were written to be applied across the district and to make sure that signage was appropriate based on historically these narrower lots and smaller, smaller buildings. And I think certainly, based on this depiction, it's, it's an appropriate sign. It does set up some challenges for changeable copy, but I don't have any disagreement with any of the Commissioner's comments.
I don't think there's anything else to add.
Anyone want to make a motion or other discussion?
I would say, based on the effort to, to do something that's architecturally responsive, I think the five-foot width is a little restrictive in this case, architecturally, to have, you know, you can fit a 16-foot copy, changeable copy, offering a little bit more flexibility in, in having the staff, giving the staff the ability to approve that within, you know, within some reasonable guidelines. You know, the sign has a base, it has changeable copy, and there's a pedimented, pedimented element to it. Seven feet may be a bit tall, but I, I would, I think a sign could be appropriate that was for this building in this instance that was outside specifically five feet in width, particularly, and, and, you know, if there were some need proportionally to make it a little bit taller than five feet, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that that were inappropriate for this sign in this location.
Sean, one other question. When you calculate the 16 square feet, I'm assuming that would include the name of the church and the street address at the bottom?
No, I, I toyed with that, whether I wanted to include the name or even, you know, the, the image of a cross up in the pediment. It seemed just simpler to leave things like the, the address and, and that, that type of graphic and even the text out. The, and not just focus on the, the message center for the, that 16 square feet. We probably could have done it another way, but that's, that's how we did it. That's how, in our staff discussions.
As I recall on a changeable copy, and this was many, I've slept many times since then, many moons ago, four-by-four is a pretty standard changeable copy piece. It gives you four lines of text, and so you can, you list four different things four different times. Again, I don't want to put too many restrictions, the sign company is very capable, they'll figure it out, but 16 square feet seems reasonable on the, on the, on the changeable copy portion of it. And that the scale of the sign be reduced, so.
So with that said, with respect to 521 Woodland Street, I move for approval with all the staff conditions, with the exception of asking the applicant work with staff on possible variation in the width of the sign.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? See, none, that motion passes. Nope, Robin?
Is there a possibility of getting some direction on height and width?
You know, Commissioner Mosley can pipe in as well, but my sense is the proportion of this may be more appropriate for that location if it's a horizontal format versus a vertical. And the, certainly when you're putting movable text. And the, certainly when you're putting movable text, you know, fixed text on a board, it's, it's harder to stack than it is to have a longer line for an item and the time and that kind of thing. So, so my sense is that I think the five feet is supported by the guidelines then and should be held, but I didn't see that there was as much guidance as far as the width of the sign, so.
So you're saying the maximum height should be held at five feet? Right. Okay.
I would think just nothing more than golden mean that something, a five by eight, five by seven is not, five by seven eighths is approaching a rectangular dimension that is in keeping with the pediment on the rectory and some other architectural elements here that I think would, would make for an appropriate sign. That's the logic behind it. So if you're taking a couple of feet off the height, taking a couple of feet off the width, I think, again, does that provide enough guidance as to?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Thank you. And we're moving on to the next project.
Okay, the next project is 411 Broadway. The building located at 411 Broadway was constructed circa 1955 and does contribute to the historic character of the Broadway District. The original projecting sign was for the Sturteya Furniture Company, which you see in the photo here on the left. The sign has been refaced several times throughout the years to promote different Current application is to reface the historic sign and for a modification to include flashing chasing lights, which must be approved by the commission. Retention of historic signage meets the design guidelines and, as proposed, the, the size and location of the, the sign are unchanged. So the projecting sign includes multiple types of illumination, including neon, LED channel letters, the flashing chasing lights, as well as an infinity mirror. The lettering for Friends is a dual-layer neon that has red and white options that are to remain static. The plans note that this is for the duration of scheduled event and only to change at the start of the next scheduled event. And so some examples given of those would be Nashville Soccer Club games, Titans games, et cetera. Staff finds that the dual neon can be appropriate since it will have the appearance of typical neon, and the location is limited to lettering, which meets the guidelines. Furthermore, the lights would not likely change for several hours at least, so it would not, that element would not have the appearance of flashing chasing lights. So for these reasons, staff finds that the dual, dual neon could be appropriate in this The exclamation point is proposed to be outlined and pushed through acrylic, which has been approved previously by the commission. It has the appearance of bare bulbs, which are not, not permitted by the guidelines, but, but they are not bare bulbs. The applicant has requested a modification that these lights have a flashing chasing element that, with a minimum of one second interval, which does meet the design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the modification, as the commission has regularly approved similar requests for projecting signs on Broadway. The G at the base of the exclamation point is proposed to be an infinity mirror, which would use a series of, which uses mirrors to create a series of increasingly smaller reflections to add a perceived depth to the sign. Oh, sorry. So this type of element was not seen historically on projecting signs, given that the sign is historic and features like this were not included on historic signs. And also since the sign is to be refaced with neon as well as flashing chasing lights, staff finds that the infinity mirror element is not appropriate in this case. Moving on, on the left side of the sign, the lettering for in low places is internally illuminated channel letters, or, sorry, yeah, internally illuminated LED channel letters, which does meet the design guidelines. The blue hatched or horizontal lines are proposed to be faux neon. The design guidelines state that neon may be used for lettering or an accent. While the proposed faux neon is not the traditional exposed neon, it is, it does have a similar effect and can be appropriate. However, staff finds that the design is more than an accent, which is allowed for neon signs in the design guidelines. So there may be other examples of this sort of hatching on other signs. However, this is a historic sign, and, and as proposed, it does include neon and the flashing chasing elements, which you, you might have seen on a historic sign. So, so for these reasons, staff recommends that the faux neon be reduced so it's truly an accent. It would be possible to outline that portion of the sign in, in the neon, or, you know, whatever the, the sign that the applicant could, could devise. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following, with the modification for flashing chasing lights with the following conditions. One, that the infinity mirror element be removed. Two, the faux neon be limited to an accent. And three, the flashing chasing lights change no more than, than every one second, which is as proposed. So with these conditions, staff finds that the, the refacing of the historic projecting sign can meet the design guidelines, and the applicant is here.
Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa, I've got a quick question for you. We, flashing, chasing, are those used sort of interchangeable, interchangeably? Or is it flashing and chasing, flashing or chasing, which is proposed in this case? Don't know?
It's, I mean, I've seen signs kind of do both, so, and either would be appropriate for modification.
Either would be appropriate, okay. Got it, thanks.
Okay. Applicant?
Sorry, you're stuck with me on this one.
Name, please.
My name is Benjamin Goldberg at 2305 12th Avenue South. I am here just to talk about that amazing neon sign that we just presented on somewhat controversial Lower Broadway, so I understand the dynamics at play. I just wanted to sort of advocate for it, make sure we all had the exact same information. I've had the opportunity to work with historic for 20 years, doing this for a long time in this town, and have had, and still have nothing but the utmost respect for the staff and the commission as a whole. We own several restaurants that are in historic buildings, as it is, so we want to make sure we play within the rules. I noticed Commissioner mentioned earlier that compliance is something that is super difficult and very important to this. And I will say, in this scenario, I think that this is more of an opinion than it is a compliance issue. So I just want to make sure you guys know that we want to make sure we're doing the right thing that everyone feels really great about. I also just want to reiterate, so the sign frame, I opened up a little tiny, little honky-tonk on Lower Broadway about 15 years ago, and we inherited this amazing, beautiful frame of a sign that you guys saw. And this will be the third go-around of getting the opportunity to redo the frame of the sign. So from a historic standpoint, the frame of the sign stands. We've retrofitted it to make sure it's historical in nature, and none of that will change. All we are talking about really are the guts of what's going on within the neon. So knowing that, I think there's three issues. One, I think, is the easy one, which is the bulbs flashing or chasing. I'm actually not sure the difference necessarily, but you guys do. So, and I think that we're good on that. Our goal is to do exactly what's already been done, has been approved in the past. I don't foresee that being the issue. So it comes down to two items, one of which has not, I don't think, been presented previously and is not within the, within or without the guidelines, but it's the infinity mirror. And one is the accent neon. And we understand that completely. And so I just wanted to sort of bring up the accent neon math that we ran, just so you guys all know, it might be in your packet. We are proposing 20.4% of the sign to be accent neon, or neon in general. Other signs down there that have been approved cover 44.8%, 31.16% north of what we're proposing as accent. We do have the largest sign on Lower Broadway, so I understand in that visual condensed, it looks like a lot. The spacing on the other ones are two and a half inch spacing and, I think, three and a half inch spacing. Ours is about five and a half inch spacing. So again, this is not a compliance thing, I think it's an interpretation thing of what might work. And so that's one thing I just wanted to make sure that we had a chance to discuss and talk about. And then I have a sample of the infinity mirror, if you guys actually want to see it. You do? Awesome. I want you to see it, come on.
Come on, see to infinity.
Beyond.
And beyond.
I can plug it in, too.
Could you plug it in?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Show and tell today.
You guys ready? Now, this is just a rough mock-up that I made myself, just kidding. The bulbs are not the bulb it's gonna be, but the infinity mirror, you know, it's, it's, it's there, and you can see it, and it's the coolest thing that you'll have on Lower Broadway. Oh, I have to show the audience, too.
Oh, my gosh.
Be good, right?
Approved.
Approved, thank you, guys.
What is the?
Heard it there first.
It's not gonna change color.
Oh, it does not change color, by the way. Thank you, Max, for cheering me on.
What does the G stand for?
Garth, come on.
I was waiting for him to answer. I was waiting for you to answer, Mr. Ben.
Garth, gross. Yeah, if you've never heard the song, Max will sing it for you. I think that's all I've got. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Again, our goal is to work with you guys to make sure this is 100% approved. We want to make sure we're asking for approval before doing anything. I think our relationship with you guys has been one over a long time where we want to do the right thing. So this is not an adversarial standpoint, this is literally just wanting to make sure that you guys have all the facts. I can answer any questions, and obviously I'm only here because we absolutely love that sign.
I think the Chair would like Max to sing the song.
Yes. Where is he? Come on, Max.
Come on.
Well, your question on, on the blue angled neon or faux, whatever you want to call it, I think. So the, I don't want to lead the conversation here, but I'll go ahead and do it anyways.
Yeah.
You know, the ribbed siding on the, that seems very intentional in terms of design of the sign to have that as a repetitive element, a kind of contextual element, I guess, to, to reflect the building, or at least in some way, angling it, obviously it wouldn't have nearly the effect if it were vertical.
Correct. I mean, we, this is not, we're working with a company that has been doing this for a long time on Lower Broadway. We've worked with four or five designers on this. We've tried to read the interpretation of the rules, fit within them. This is not a whimsical, back-of-the-napkin drawing. This is one that we believe does actually fit within the guidelines, is the only reason I'm here. And everything about the sign has been really thought through and intentional.
Okay. You have any other questions?
On the infinity mirror, that would be sort of submitted under the excellence in design, coolest thing ever, portion of the signage guidelines.
That would go under the, I don't think it's not allowed.
Okay.
This portion of the unwritten guidelines.
I can just, I'll say to that one, or in response to that, when Robin and I were sitting in the room with, you know, gosh, Cobb and who was on the tourism board at that time, we literally thought, and, and there's plenty of things we've never thought of that I'm sure we'll see before, so we need to not necessarily regulate every possible thing, but certainly try to figure out how, and so here we sit today. Noted, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you, guys.
All right, open public hearing. Any more really whimsical comments? Close public hearing. All right, Commissioners. Maybe we ought to go back to Melissa. And again, I think the proportion of the blue is, I'm not really clear on recommendation versus what the applicant is proposing.
So the, the recommendation is, we found that it to be more than an accent, given the size of the sign. The applicant did, and it's, and it's in your packet, did submit an exhibit that showed some other signs in the district that included similar elements. Granted, those were smaller signs, they were not historic signs. So, so that was.
Your recommendation?
Yes.
Gotcha. You have any other questions to have? Or are we still looking at it? So the mirror element has not been seen in the historic fabric and district, correct? So this is like a new element.
So I don't want to necessarily redefine, I, I think I clearly understand this staff's concern in, in terms of the faux neon or the blue element as, can that be, can it fit within the guidelines as, as an accent? I think to take, as, as a matter just purely of signage and design, to take that and then accent the in-low places with it, in terms of how it ties into the building, I wonder if you would get a less, a more busy, less good sign. Personally, I get that, you know, you've kind of taken the, the ribbing that's on the building, it's, it's not introducing a new architectural element. To me, it speaks a little bit to what the original building is. And so I can, I would pose an argument that it is by design an accent to, to that piece because it contrasts the Friends portion of the sign with the in-low places. Not everyone should necessarily be convinced, convinced by my argument, but I'm positing that out there in that if you take and sort of do the same thing with both signs, you don't get this point, counterpoint of, I'm speaking a little, little too designy here, but I think the accent makes the Friend, makes the contrast between those things. It improves the quality of the sign, the overall, qualitatively, the design of the sign. Whether, if you saw this in another place or on another sign, and granted, this is the largest sign, you know, historically, they're, they're granted that by, by its existence. You know, are you encouraging this to happen? Would it be appropriate in another, another setting? I don't know the answer to that, and certainly would welcome other Commissioners' opinions about whether I'm full of it in making this argument or not, or if they, if they see it similarly. But that would be my, my take on that particular piece of, of the design. You know, could you just take that blue and make it a solid color and not have additional neon there on the in-low places and maybe achieve the same thing as possible? But that would be my, I don't know that making it an accent in, to in-low places would yield a better signage design in this, in this instance.
Can I ask a staff question?
Sure.
Is there a percentage that you use to determine, how do you define what an accent is, I guess is what I'm asking?
Well, it talks about, let me see, it talks about lettering being an accent. So, yeah, the guidelines say exposed neon may be used for lettering or as an accent. So I think in the past, it's, Robin Mancer, it's been kind of an eyeball thing, this looks like it's a good, good portion of the sign, so we felt like it was a bit more than an accent. But guidance on that would be appreciated, so, as always.
Add to that, the, the guidelines, that's why there are nine of you to make decisions. Staff doesn't decide what that means, all of you do together with the decisions you make. But I, I understand what Commissioner Mosley is saying about the rib, the ribbing of the building, there's not another building like that, so that piece of it wouldn't set a precedent.
You know, I'll reiterate, I think if you took the shade of blue that the building is and you, and you made it solid with the white, I think from a design standpoint, it would still achieve what they're looking to do. The question then becomes whether the blue angled ribs are accent or, or not. And would they be, the design of this seems appropriate for the location and for this sign, would, would they be appropriate in other places? And are we gonna have to be, you know, digging our heels in to say that's too much on another sign? Is, you know, we don't want to punish this applicant for that, but certainly we have to be mindful of that in, in each of these decisions that we make.
No, I find this sign to be, you know, pretty appropriate for what, a lot of what we're seeing. I mean, some of the other s- we're seeing. I mean, some of the other signs that we've seen on Lower Broad have not excited, not made me feel, you know, as good as this one does. And part of that is just growing up in Nashville and knowing this building as part of the Nashville history and having that historic sign being reused as the building use changes. But Commissioner Mahal, you're a Broadway signage.
I really like this sign.
The reasons?
And.
How does it compare with the other signs that you've seen through the years?
Well, I think Commissioner Stewart made a really good point. There's been others that, you know, are brand new and they're jarring and things. And this is, this is, you know, retrofitting a historic sign. And I think it's with a modern concept. And I think it's, would be a great addition. It's not going to interfere with Ernest Tub, you know, at all. It's on the other side. And while I've got Goldberg's here, I hope you, you know, you appreciate, you know, the folks at Ernest Tub and work with them. I think it's, I like it.
I didn't, sorry, I don't know if you were done or not. I didn't comment on the, I'm less moved by the, I didn't quite see to infinity in that portion of the sign, but I don't, I don't, that's not a hill I need to die on personally. But I'm yielding certainly on, from this staff's recommendation, on the accent with the blue neon, maybe a little less so on the infinity mirror. I'd love to hear others' thoughts, or if they can justify it in or out of the guidelines, one way or the other, I think.
You know, the guidelines do have a pretty good list of prohibited materials and prohibited technical aspects of signage. And you're right, it doesn't include infinity mirrors. You know, it is a round element on the bottom part of the sign. And we've approved other ones that I am offended by. So this one, because it's a smaller element of that sign, I don't tend to be bothered by it.
Just based on the discussion, it sounds like you're leaning towards infinity mirrors. If that's the case, staff would greatly appreciate some direction. If it's simply approved without any kind of conditions, that means someone can come back with an entire sign being an infinity mirror. Again, we didn't see, you don't see them historically, which is why we went the direction we did. But if you do find that it's appropriate, and of course, there's no way for the guidelines to list everything that's not appropriate or appropriate. But if you find that they are, any direction you can give us to keep an entire sign, unless you do mean for an entire sign to be an infinity mirror, please, please add that in.
I think you can maybe say, you know, maybe it's a percentage of the total sign? That looks like, what, an eighth?
Ten.
Yeah, it's like less than that.
Ten percent.
A tenth?
I think to the administrator's point, if the, if we are moving in that direction, that the motion limited, specifically limited to a small portion, meaning 10% or less.
I want to ask Robin a quick question, though. I mean, I love this sign too. I think it looks great. My only issue might be the infinity mirror. And your comment was you didn't find it historic. And that was your, that was staff's recommendation was based on that, correct?
Not that it's not historic, because of course, it's not historic.
Right.
But that everything that you do is based on historic context to a great extent. And historically, the signs were neon, they were painted wood, they were on windows, but none of them had anything like an infinity mirror.
Okay.
And the ability to have neon and flashing and chasing and spinning elements, that's already a lot.
I don't have so much of a problem with the accent. I'm a little on the fence about the mirror.
Okay. Anybody else have that uneasy opinion? Broadway.
I know.
Broadway is a evolving environment. And, you know, are we compliant? Do we move towards compliance? Are we moving towards having a more fresh ideas about it? We've been pretty strict on signage in the past. But, and this is a historical sign. I think there's a lot going on with this sign. And a lot of moving parts. It's just my take on the design. That's not negative or positive.
I like the idea of limiting the percentage of the sign that would be the infinity mirror that would help to avoid what Robin was talking about. And just to get us kicked off and welcome to any and all amendments to it. With respect to 411 Broadway, I move for approval with staff condition number three, and that the infinity mirror element be limited to 10% of the total square footage of the sign.
The maximum of 10%.
Maximum of 10%.
Is that helpful, Robin?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So that is the motion, Vice Chair?
That is the motion.
Good. Number two.
No, I think based on what Commissioner Mosley said, I'm comfortable with number two as presented by the applicant.
Second? Okay. There's a motion. There's a second?
Summary.
Yes, please.
I think it's in the record, but I'd like to add that, you know, on number two, that the faux-neon is representative of a contextual element on the building, that it's not introducing a new component or a contrasting component that's not present otherwise.
Yes, duly noted. So there's a motion. There's a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I hear none and see none. So that motion passes. Thank you.
Does that mean we can't hear the song?
I don't think he was willing to sing the song.
No, I don't think so either.
Unless you want to sing the song.
No, 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 no.
Okay. And we move on.
Oh, is it?
Okay. Next up is 2408 Barton. This is a circa 1925 house that contributes to the Hillsborough West End neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. This neighborhood is not a part of the recent consolidation, so this project is evaluated under those previous There's an existing one-story outbuilding on the property that was permitted in 2006. This application is to slightly increase the footprint and to add a half-story. The increase in footprint is very modest and results in a structure with a footprint of just 560 square feet. The additional footprint does not create any setback issues. The overall height is approximately 21 feet, which meets the guidelines. The eve heights are not changing and are 10 feet 6 inches. This is 6 inches taller than the guidelines actually allow, but because it's existing and they're not asking for a change, staff finds that to be appropriate in this case. In this overlay, dormers may be 50% of the roof plane, which typically has been measured from eve to eve and cheek wall to cheek wall. So on the east elevation, the roof is measuring 22 feet from eve to eve. And the proposed dormer is measuring about 17 feet from cheek wall to cheek wall. Staff finds that the dormer width should be reduced to meet the guidelines. The dormers on the north and south elevation are also more than 50% of the roof plane, and they also connect to the cross dormers. Staff finds it's not appropriate to connect gables to dormers as the maximum dormer size is intended to limit the massing of the half-story. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the dormers shall be reduced, staff recommends approval, the proposed outbuilding, with the conditions that the dormers be reduced in width to be no more than 50% of the roof plane, that the dormer shall be fully disconnected from the gables, and that the material shall be approved prior to purchase and installation. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed outbuilding addition would meet the design guidelines for Hillsborough West End. I know the applicant is here and would like to speak. Do you have questions for me first?
Thank you, Jenny.
Hello. We're Jay and Elizabeth Frein. We live at 2408 Barton Avenue. We've been in the neighborhood since 99 and in this house for 15 years. We remodeled the house prior to the overlay with the intention of keeping the original garage. But because of some planning and just construction issues, we had to replace it. And so I think it was one of the first garages maybe approved in the overlay for that neighborhood. So our goal was to keep the same design as the original garage with the intersecting dormers, the pedestrian door on the side. I guess now with family changes, we need an extra space for a studio above the garage. So our goal is to keep the existing footprint. We have a couple minor extension on, that was highlighted in the yellow, just to honor the original design of the garage, as well as to monitor the cost of the project. We've been working with an architect since April and feel that we have followed the guidelines as they are stated by the Historic Commission and feel that maybe we're up to some different interpretations as to what those rules actually say.
Okay. So yeah, as my husband stated, we've been working on this since April. And we were under the impression that indeed our plan did meet the guidelines. In terms of the dormers covering no more than 50% of the roof plane, I guess my understanding of that would be an area, a formula of area, considering two measurements, width and height, or width and length, however you want to look at that, not simply the width measurement. And so this, as you can see in the top design, this top image, the north face and the south face, those are both equal. And those dormers cover 44, each 44% of those roof planes that they're sitting on. The east-facing dormer covers 40% of the roof plane. And so because this is a gable, a two-gable, intersecting gable garage, it's different than what you normally see with the one gable, where you would have a dormer and you would consider that full face or that full side of the garage. I would ask that if you are just considering the width of the dormer and the width of that roof plane, not the area, that you should consider the whole, the whole face, I'm sorry, the whole, the whole side of that, whoops, of our garage, let's see. Okay, sorry, I'm not very good at this. Let me go, I'm going to go to that picture of our design. There we go. And then in terms of, and then in terms of it, of the dormer reaching the other dormer, I believe, you know, this is unusual to have this two-gabled garage. And as my husband said, it is based off the original 1925 plan with a pedestrian door on the left and a garage plan on the right. And that's how we bought the house. And so we rebuilt it with the two intersecting gables. The way those gables meet in a perpendicular fashion, it seems that those dormers should be considered in a unique way. Because in order to have the headroom that you're trying to achieve with a dormer, it would need to connect to that gable, that south-facing gable that is above the garage. And in no, in no place I couldn't find, maybe you can show me, where it says that you cannot have dormers that touch two gables. I could not find that anywhere, reading it over and over. Let's see. Let me see. I have a couple of examples of, of other nice-looking garages, not obviously in Hwin, that also have two intersecting gables with that same dead-ending dormer, if that's how you'd like to say, included. Okay? I think it's just really a function of the shape of the existing building. By allowing us to just create, to add this, the half-story above, we're able to not tear out concrete, not tear out fences, not tear out that breezeway, and also not take down the tree behind the garage, which was planted in 1971. So we're approved for a 24-foot garage outbuilding. And a 1,000-square-foot outbuilding, we're really just proposing less than 22-foot height. And it's five, less than 560 square feet. We're doing that because we want to preserve the character of, of the original buildings on the property.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Open public hearing and close public hearing. So if I understand the applicant's explanation is really, you're not agreeing to one and two. Do we need other explanation from, I'm sorry, Melissa? Jenny? Do we have any other questions for Jenny on how the calculation is beyond the 50%? Any questions on that? I have no eyes that I can see. Any questions?
I think the reason for, the applicant's reason for doing these things is just purely headroom and space within the, I don't think there's any secret about what's trying to happen here. I think the way that having the combination, restating the obvious here, having the combination of crossing gables and then adding the dormer onto that is where to create contiguous or continuous, you know, headroom is really what's at play here. So you don't have a bunch of headknockers. I don't think it really works at this size without doing some of the moves architecturally that have been done here. So either it gets bigger, there's a deeper porch on the front floor, on the first floor, and it gets bigger, and you change configuration of the roofs, or, you know, it looks different. I know we don't, we don't design the interior of these things, but you don't have, if you disconnect them, I think you're running into some serious design issues. I'm not arguing for this plan or this solution. I'm just stating architecturally what likely is going on here.
And we had this come up several years ago and had fairly lengthy discussions about how you consider the half, you know, 50% rule on this. And I do think that at that time, we did come up as a commission with the guidance of, it's not the exact area of the dormer, but it's the length of the dormer versus the length of the roof. And I think that's what the precedent was. Unfortunately, I had thought that we had cleared up the language in the guidelines. Unfortunately, I had thought that we had cleared up the language in the guidelines, but it clearly says 50% of the roof plane, and, and a plane is...
The plane.
Plane. It's not, the length is one-dimensional, the plane is two-dimensional. And so I think that here, my struggle is that I see the language that the architect and the applicant used in the guidelines, and then I see a different interpretation than what I would interpret those, that language to say, so that's...
And you're right, we did clean it up in the consolidated, but this neighborhood didn't wish to be in that.
Right.
So that's why we're still struggling with this no-man's-land. And it's something that we're starting to see a lot of, so we're really, again, sort of looking to your interpretation with this case for other cases. Because the idea, I think, was that a one-and-a-half-story building would have dormers, or it'd be a cross-gable, but it wouldn't be both. When you're adding the two together, you're starting to head down the road of a two-story building. And these one-and-a-half stories are already significantly bigger than historic outbuildings were. So that's, so again, if there's information about this particular site that causes you to approve it, great, but if there isn't, if you could provide us with guidance on other projects, that would be greatly appreciated.
I agree with the logic on that. I guess like Commissioner Mosley said, and the applicant said, you know, for them to achieve the same studio space upstairs, they basically have to tear this down and build a much larger structure, which they would be allowed to do on the site. And they're allowed to build, you know, a larger footprint and taller structure, which is what they'd wind up doing if they do that. So, so in some ways, what we want and what, this is probably the toughest one of the day, so.
Yeah, I think, not necessarily with this one, but, you know, to, you know, Administrator Ziegler's point, when you get gables and, you know, dormers crashing into each other, you can get into undesirable architectural consequences from that happening. And so I think that, you know, cleaning it up was the right thing to do, and unfortunately, we don't, we can't lean on that necessarily here. Or it's a little harder to lean on that here, just purely based on the language. You know, the, at the rear, well, excuse me, not rear, the, hmm, east elevation. You know, that's a pretty clean, pretty clean-looking dormer, some of the others are, and there were pictures shown of things that weren't architecturally, that were resolved, and I'm not suggesting this one is not resolved, but it's, it's trying to get them all on, on each side to make that space habitable. And I think Administrator Ziegler's point is taken, that it's trying to get the full two stories out of something that's wanting to be one and a half. So I've not helped us at all.
I guess the other complication I run into in looking at the cross-gables and the dormer coming into it, the only language I see in the guidelines, and it pointed out to me if there's other, but, you know, the outbuilding should be compatible by not contrasting greatly with surrounding historic outbuildings in terms of height, scale, roof, shape, materials, texture, and details. So it's not very specific as far as that particular element here.
No, it's not, and I think what, you know, when you see dormers in, historically, when you see dormers on face, they don't dominate the roof plane. There's more roof plane than there is dormer. And in this case, in these outbuildings, you're, you know, they want to be smaller in scale, so you're trying to compress all that, and it's like, it's like trying to build a dollhouse that's to scale with Home Depot-bought shingles, like it just doesn't work, the scales is off. And, and I think, you know, in trying to compress all these things into such a small roof area or such a small building, it proves to be very difficult for us to regulate and for architects to draw and for applicants to want to live in and build.
I think there could be some leeway, just from the discussion, because the languaging of the guidelines isn't, it's broader in terms of 50% of the roof plane. Could be some leniency on that, because it's not exactly clear like the consolidated guidelines. But the second, the intersecting of cross-gable, that seems to me where there's much more guideline. And like architecturally, you said that could, that could have some issues presented at some point. Anyway, trying to get this discussion to...
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to design this for the applicant, and I'm not suggesting this is necessarily a good idea, but I'm just, as a thought, thought exercise here. If the, you know, creating a porch on the ground floor to keep the base of the, just to be able to build on top of what's already there and not tear the whole thing down and start again. But if that were a little wider and you had enough space there to do an additional cross-gable, and you have a double cross-gable there, is that more appropriate or is that just as bad? And I know we're, again, speaking in, in what-if scenarios, but that gets you a little bit more headroom in this condition, the applicant, it may not serve their function. I'm just asking a question out loud of, is one thing more appropriate and does that allow, because it's smaller, allow you to be able to be a little more permissive because it is of much less square footage in it, so it is a smaller scaled outbuilding and lends itself, you know, more towards what's desirable or historically accurate than what would be permitted otherwise? And the applicant made that point.
The guidelines do reference the relationship to the house that's on the same property and relating to that house, and this house does have two gabled additions on the back of it. I don't know whether they were original or, but there are those two roof forms coming out of the back of this house.
Again, I don't know if that's a good solution, I just, would our, would our discussion be different or would it be the same? I was too much on top of, on top of this, or if it resolved itself architecturally with a little less, you know, with capturing the space and not having the dormers intersect the gable, the cross-gable, is, are you framing the argument any differently by doing that?
Beth, do you have any comments on this as an architect?
No, I'm a little stuck on this one right now. I kind of do see the, the argument for the 50%, but I'm having issues with the connecting, the dormers connecting to the gable. Not that I couldn't be persuaded, maybe, but...
Not that you couldn't be persuaded, is that...
Right, yeah. I can justify the 50%.
Yeah, I lean as that as well. I mean, as a supportive statement, is that because of the 50% being, however, the disconnecting of number-two condition is really, I feel like we're, the other architects are, with us architect, non-architects, I think we're sort of leaning into where we're waiting for your, because then we'll have to give a little bit of guidance to staff on how to proceed with other projects in the Hillsborough West End neighborhood. Again, because they are not under the consolidated guidelines. No comments on this side, okay? I think our architects are doing some math, so let's, let's see what, what they come up with here.
If somebody's doing some math, that's an architect, and not me, as drawn, are these less than 50% of the plane?
Yeah, of the plane, they are.
Of the plane.
Yeah, not the distance, not the length.
Correct, not the length, but of the plane, they are.
Okay. So basically, that's following the guidelines.
As written.
As written.
As these...
As written. So again, let me just get that, because, so that we're really clear, number one doesn't seem to be our issue. But number two is, number three is typical. So again, I think we need to dig deep, deeper on how number two about, I mean, what is, you know, what is that? And it sort of has to do with the 50% of the plane as well, I think.
Doesn't it, doesn't it? Because one of the things that your guidelines talk about, again, is everything comes back to the historic context, and it talks about the roof form and massing should be similar. You don't see this kind of connection with dormers to, to gables historically.
Hi.
Yeah, the, the connection, I guess, I feel like setting precedent, you know, once we've talked about that before. How far do we take it?
Kent would like to...
Thank you, sir.
Sure. You're asking the applicant?
Yes.
No, he wants to ask. Are commissioners, are you okay for, okay, applicant, the commission would like to hear you. Help us figure this one out as well.
There are House Historic Homes in the neighborhood that have been approved with, which seems to me to be dormers connecting in two gables.
Here's one example in the neighborhood that's under construction currently. It comes out more at a 45-degree angle, but it indeed is connecting two gables. That's under construction right now. And then, whoops, where'd that other one go? Oh, maybe I don't have that. I don't, oh, okay. You can see, I don't have a closer, well...
She has it on picture and paper, if you'd like to see that.
Sure.
Here, you have like 10 of them.
Okay, yeah, I do.
Sugar them.
I hope you realize we're trying to help you out. This is what the deliberation is all about.
And you're sure these examples are in the overlay district?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, good.
The, the back photo of each packet, there should be enough.
And I'll just add to that from the staff's perspective, we didn't look at new construction, we looked at the historic context, and we didn't look at primary buildings and additions. We were looking at outbuildings, specifically because, I'm not sure they should be allowed anywhere, but specifically because outbuildings that are being constructed today are so much bigger than they were historically, and the guidelines do say that they should be similar to historic buildings, but obviously, there's no way to really do that. And then that's where we get into this concern, and that's why we changed to the consolidated, because there was, you know, times change.
So that last photo on the back of the packet is an example of an addition during the historic overlay, it was completed about three years ago, and you can see there are a lot of things going on. We feel like we're presenting a really clean plan, something that follows the spirit of the guidelines. I know we're talking about a dormer not dead-ending, but honestly, I haven't been able to find that in the historic guidelines for outbuilding or for main structure. I just don't see that language. And so I would ask that you, number one, this photo here, this is, this is our view from the street. You won't even be able to see those dead-ending. By the time that, that gable above, above the garage door comes up to 22 feet and broadens a little bit, you're not even going to be able to see the dead-ending gables, or I'm sorry, dead-ending dormers. One will be behind the house, and the other will be facing that tree that we're trying not to cut down. And then secondly, or I guess lastly, I would just ask that, you know, the dead-ending dormer, I feel like, you know, it's not, it's not in the document, and so I feel like a lot of the conversation has been about like taste or style, and I certainly appreciate that, that's why we've been working on this since April. But if it's not in the document, I don't, you know, I, I find it hard to, to make decisions about, you know, whether you would build it yourself or you like that design. We were going by the, by the document and what we found in there. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
And I think I also appreciate Robin saying that, you know, they were going to the historical context and not new build, so I think the staff really tries to, again, be in line with the guidelines and, and as much as we can, again, to stay compliant.
Can I ask a question about precedent? So Hillsborough West End did not opt-in to the consolidated guidelines, right?
Right.
Okay. So if it's allowed here because it's vague under the old guidelines, how does that affect the precedent under the consolidated guidelines? It wouldn't. Okay.
So it would affect potentially Belmont Hillsborough, Hillsborough West End, and Richland West End. Those are the three that opted out.
I mean, three pretty significant districts.
And if they are listening to this meeting, they will understand why we would have a difficulty. And if, let's say, here's the scenario, and if this project got to be approved, and your neighborhood association, I'm going to, courtesy of the chair, is that they'll say, well, that's not what we intended. And so then that neighborhood association is going to come back and have another conversation with the staff. But, and again, we try to do our best, but they definitely wanted to opt out, so, again, this is why it becomes difficult for ours, commission and the staff, to, to weigh out these really challenging projects. Make a stab at it.
So if the staff could clarify, there's a 500, what's the square footage of the...
Outbuilding.
I see a reference to 555.
Yes, with, with the addition, the footprint was going to be about 560 square feet, so fairly modest.
Which is modest. It's modest compared to the 1,000 that they could build.
Correct.
They could have 1,000.
They could have 1,000.
There would be a lot of that.
750 is, I know that has nothing to do with this, but 750 is the DADU limit, is that right?
No, you mean...
Depending on square footage.
Footprint, there's...
Upstairs.
700, 700.
Okay.
But that is neither here nor there for our purposes.
Yeah, for our purposes, no, I'm just trying to...
Because we don't want to use...
The footprint is... The footprint is five hundred, so let's be clear, the footprint is five hundred and forty-six.
About five hundred and sixty with the proposed addition.
Yeah, five hundred and sixty.
Correct.
That's the footprint. I can't make this decision for you all. You have to go through it, I cannot tell you what to do.
As much as you.
As much as I want to tell you. But that is what we have in front of us, and we need to make a decision. So let's make one, please. Right or wrong, the best that we do. And, and again, sometimes when we make these decisions, the applicant continue work with staff, let's just say that. You have been working very hard at it, and we appreciate you doing that since April, so please know that. You've put a lot of work and effort and emotions into it, and we, we can tell.
We were accused of doing math earlier. Be allowed in the DADU, and significantly smaller than what's allowed by right in this district or others that are similar, for, for what it's worth. If you wanted to.
Yeah, and, and for the other, yeah, exactly. And commissioners, you know, on page four of this, I mean, this laid out how they've really gone through and made every possible, following the guidelines, see that. And you know, sometimes we've given some leniency because they haven't built to the maximum that they have done. I'm, I'm leading you there, but I'm just saying that we have made decisions where we've made a compromise on whether it's a larger in the massing and scaling versus something that's reasonable. So weigh that into your decision.
So I will throw one out, just for sausage to be ground up after I.
Please do, vice chair.
With respect to twenty-four oh eight Barton Avenue, I move for approval of the, well, with respect to this project and in recognition of it being just over half of the square footage that could be allowed, and with the owner's desire to retain the existing configuration of the existing garage and historic garage, I move for approval of the applicant's drawings as submitted and with condition three of the staff recommendation.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? And is there clarification that's needed? When you say according to the applicant's drawings, that is as presented?
As presented.
Do, I think it'd be helpful for us, for the staff, to have a calculation by the applicant of roof plane?
Sure, yeah.
So that we can confirm it's, it meets the guidelines?
Oh, yeah.
That the staff can confirm that it meets, measured in a plane, two dimensions?
In a plane.
That it meets.
Fifty percent of the roof plane.
Not disturbing more than fifty percent of the roof plane.
Yes.
Measured in two dimensions, length and width.
Yes.
And that, that is measured in the plane, the gable section doesn't count, it's the shingled roofed portion.
Okay. Is that guidance there? We're making a motion just to make sure we're, we're not coming back and, okay. Okay, there's been a motion to that, and, and I'm liking what I'm hearing. Is there a second to the motion? Ben, are you seconding the motion with that? Okay. All right, we have to, okay, somebody make.
Second.
Okay, there's a second. The motion is on the table, all in favor of the motion. I'm gonna say, yes, raise your hand. Okay, one, two, three, four, those opposed to the motion. One, there's two. Good. So that motion passes, correct? One, two, three, four, is, does that reach the quorum legal? Yes, okay. All right, thank you very much, we appreciate your time, and thank you for the deliberation, commissioners, and we are learning our lessons well.
I'm going to pull up that case that was removed from the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Just.
Yes, fourteen oh seven Elmwood, which is number fourteen on the agenda.
I just put this together off to the side, so apologies if anything looks out of place, please interrupt if you have any questions. So fourteen oh seven Elmwood Avenue is an application to construct an outbuilding in the rear yard. The left there is a parcel map showing you that it's the southeast corner of the intersection of Elmwood and Fifteenth Avenue South. And you see on the image on the right there, just that, again, that, that's the aerial view of the lot, there's a little roundabout just in the, in that intersection. Zooming in a little bit, okay, here's the Sanborn map from nineteen fifty-seven, it shows the, that there was an outbuilding in the rear yard, rear of this yard, that was directly on Fifteenth Avenue South. In fact, you see that there were outbuildings that sat directly on Fifteenth Avenue South at fourteen oh seven and fifteen oh one Elmwood, and also at fourteen oh six and fifteen hundred Beechwood Avenue, which is across the alley to the south of this property. Here's another aerial view of the property on the left, and you see that the outbuilding that was there in nineteen fifty-seven is no longer there, but vehicles still park there and essentially what is the same curb cut. The applicant today is proposing a new outbuilding in the rear yard that would access, that would be accessed from South Fifth, South Fifteenth, sorry, Fifteenth Avenue South, from that pre-existing curb cut. I'll zoom in a little bit on that, and you can see that the footprint of the building is seven hundred and fifty square feet. They are requesting a setback determination to be seventeen feet from the property line. Street-facing garages with garage doors that open towards the street have a bulk zoning setback of twenty feet, they're asking for seventeen. You can also see there, the property line is rounded, and there's a, the seventeen feet from the property line is marked. There is an additional eight feet, nine inches of grass buffer, essentially an unpaved portion of the right-of-way that abuts the property. That could at some point be reclaimed by the city to be, to be paved as a sidewalk, but even if that were to happen, it's likely that, essentially that, you know, the setback from the property line is seventeen feet, but it has a perceived setback of twenty-five feet, if you get what I'm saying, of where the curb. So because, well, because the outbuilding is located in the location of historic outbuilding, which were often much closer to the street, and because of that buffer on the side, staff felt that the, the proposed location was appropriate. It does meet the interior side and alley setbacks, as well as the required distance from the house. Floor plan, seven hundred and fifty square foot with a DADU above. It is a one and a half story structure, this is the elevation facing the street, nine feet eleven inches and change to the eve, which meets the design guidelines, and twenty-three feet nine inches from garage floor to the ridge, also meets the design guidelines and is shorter than the corresponding proportion of the house. It is a corner lot, and those are just all four elevations. This is a, staff finds that the character, scale, design of the outbuilding meets, excuse me, and materials meet all the design guidelines. It would have probably, well, it would have been a staff permit if not for the setback determination and the fact that it's on a corner lot. And staff recommends approval of the proposed outbuilding at fourteen oh seven Elmwood Avenue with a seventeen-foot west-side setback, with the condition that the door selections and driveway materials are approved prior to purchase and installation, and with that condition, staff finds this proposal meets the outbuildings for the overlay.
Thank you, Sean.
Sean, one question. Do we not have a guideline that recommends that there be single garage doors if it's a street-facing garage?
That was something that we pushed, or the commission was requiring in the past, it seems to not be, maybe it's something that's been relaxed. It's not in the guidelines and it's not italicized, so I think it was more of a, a trend or a precedent that, that maybe has relaxed in time. But it's certainly something you can discuss or require.
So obviously, the applicant is not here.
Oh, yes.
Oh, gotcha, oh, you're the applicant, I gotcha, all right.
Of course, a, a neighbor who I believe is across the street.
Okay, sure, thank you, Sean. Applicant?
My name is Martin Wick, I'm at nine twelve Bailey Street, I'm the architect for the project. As Sean said, this would typically be on a consent agenda. We're here to respond to whatever complaints they have, but we didn't really have anything to present, so I'm just here. If you have questions on the single door versus double, I know that's usually for front-facing, like if it was facing Elmwood, but I hadn't really thought about it if it's facing a side street, we're happy with that if that is a condition that we do need to meet. But otherwise, I think we're, we're within the guidelines, and I just, we need to hear what the, the complaint is.
Okay, thank you. All right. Open public hearing? And please give us your name and address.
My name is Christine M. Johnson, and I live at fifteen oh one Elmwood Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, three seven two one two. And I've been there for fifty, almost fifty years. And we've tried to keep our neighborhood as it's supposed to be. And if this, if this project is set and fixed the way it's supposed to, that he wants it, it will decrease my value of my home, my land. And I'm asking the board to please consider that. I have bed and breakfast at fifteen oh one Beechwood, and if, if he builds this project the way he wanted, to come out on Fifteenth, it would be a disaster, because it's not any other projects that's on Fifteenth even look like this project. And for me to be there for fifty years, and changes have been made, but not this drastic, so please consider that. And we want to keep the neighborhood, a historical neighborhood, as long as we possibly can. And please consider that also. And I don't mind, and I wouldn't have any questions, if he would build his garage at the alley, come out of the alley and go through the end to the alley, I have no problem with that. But for this building to sit on Fifteenth, it's just not anything on Fifteenth to connect with this building. And I appreciate it, if y'all consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting, and thank you for your comments. So let me ask a question again to the lady, and I didn't quite get your last name, what was it again?
Christine with a C, and J O H N S O N.
Ms. Johnson, so you're, you're neighbors to this fourteen oh seven Elmwood, is that correct?
Correct.
You're at fifty, you're at fifteen oh one?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, so is that back-to-back, is that what you're, do we have a side plan of that?
We're side to side, he's.
Side to side.
He's on, on the right side, and I would be on the left side, either vice versa.
Okay, just to get a clarification of where you're at. Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else? Public hearing? Applicant, you could actually come during your applicant time, but come on through. No, come on through, come on.
My name is Rob Fraser, I live at fourteen oh seven Elmwood Avenue with my wife Carol, we've been there for thirty-two years. And we moved in as young, thirty-somethings, now we're in our sixties, and we wanted to, as we looked toward retirement, we always wanted to have a garage, and so many of our friends are building garage with apartments above, with, we're looking at long-term rental, and we would just like to have that rental income as we move into retirement. I wouldn't mind building the garage on the back of the lot, but it's impossible to have entry into the garage, because there is a zero lot line garage in the lot behind us, was built way before, excuse me, codes would have prohibited that. There's simply no way to turn in off of Fifteenth, down the alley, and make a turn into that garage. My neighbors at fifteen oh, fourteen oh three and fourteen oh five each have large garages on the alley, and even they, without a garage across the alley, have trouble pulling into their driveways. There's just no way. I think perhaps Mr. Alexander provided a photo to you? Did he not? There's some photos, there's one of, that I took of the, it's called Alley View, and you can see to the right, that's my back neighbor across the alley, and you can see the large garages further down the alley. There's just no way to pull a car into a garage entrance on the back, even with an eight-foot setback. I'd also like to bring to your attention that there's another garage on a corresponding property one block north of us, at fourteen oh seven Linden, exactly the same setting, a house facing Linden and a garage behind the house. That's also a photo, do you have that?
Facing Fifteenth.
Sorry?
And the garage is facing Fifteenth.
Yeah, and the garage is facing Fifteenth, just like we'd like ours. You can't really see from my photo, but there is an apartment above that garage, so you can see the dormer sticking out. And then, the, the final shot is where we park our cars right now, which is more or less the footprint of where we'd like this garage to go. So I really don't see why, Mrs. Johnson has an issue, we've been friendly for all these years, she has a carport, she and Mr. Payton, her husband, have a carport in exactly the same footprint on their property, and it's a covered carport, it would be a mirror of our garage, that's been there, we've never made an issue with that, I don't, and that doesn't look historical at all to me, that's a tin-covered, metal-covered carport, very much out of character in our neighborhood, but I've never made an issue of that, and I don't plan to. So I don't want to get, you know, we don't want to be contentious, but I'm disappointed that Mrs. Johnson has this objection, and I would simply ask you to consider that there's really no reason, in our view, for this to be turned down. With respect, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, appreciate you waiting as well. Ms. Johnson, I, we, we actually haven't closed public hearing, because he, he was rebuttal of, yeah, he was under his rebuttal time, correct, as an applicant? Who's keeping track of the timing? And he had time to rebut, right? Yes, okay.
Since there's already been rebuttal.
I didn't close public hearing, I'm sorry.
She used her two minutes.
Yeah, she used her two minutes, yeah. Ms. Johnson, we, we actually, we actually would close public hearing. Maybe the thing would be is to, to have a neighbor neighbor talk about that, and just have some, some friendly neighborhood conversation is what I would suggest. So maybe you can work things out that way. Okay, since we've opened and closed public hearing, you've had the rebuttal, I just want to make sure I got processes correctly, now, now the commission can discuss. Now, commission can discuss.
I just have a hard time, I have a difficult time trying to envision why this might deflate the value of Ms. Johnson's property. Did anybody, can anybody?
Yeah, I'm not, I can't comment on, I'm in a...
Value.
I have not the expertise to say, you know, whether that would be the case or not. I can comment on, you know, the Sanborn map shows something similarly oriented. There's an existing curb cut there that, in the staff's estimation, has been there for, since before the guidelines were instituted. And given previously how we've addressed that, I think certainly there will be precedence for it to continue, and that just a block away, there is a similar orientation. You know, I think the preference oftentimes is for buildings to, when an alley, there is access from an alley, that they approach that. But in this case, because there's historically in the Sanborn map, a building there, I don't see that as a, often by right, applicants would be granted the ability to do that.
Any other comments?
I find the application to meet the guidelines in every way. I'm struggling to find a way that they do not.
Will you make a motion, please?
Sure. With respect to 1407 Elmwood Avenue, I move approval with the recommendations of the staff.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, that motion passes. Okay. Thank you again for waiting to the very end. We appreciate your time. We thank you for the public for being here. And the commissioners, we have a little bit of training.
Going to close the meeting?
Oh, sure. Yes. We are, yes, we don't have to vote on that, though, do we?
Move to adjourn.
This is for...
Yes, move to adjourn, as legal would say to me. Okay.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.